That's where I'm going. How's that? Is that better? Better background? Nobody's on yet, right? Oh, it's being recorded, so it doesn't really matter. I forgot my coat. I could wear my chef's coat.
I was gonna say, I don't even have one there that you could make do with.
No, I might actually.
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you fine. I had to mute myself.
Okay. Hey, how are you Scott?
Good. How are you?
Good. I am good.
Hi Jules.
Hey Jess, I changed.
Hello everybody else too.
Hello Brady Bunch.
Jess, I changed that thing for you.
Oh, that's funny. I was like, wait, I forgot to one, but yeah.
There was plenty of time. I got here so early.
I almost came Jules, but um.
Oh, did you? Yeah. Well, it was funny because I was just FaceTiming the boys and of course their mother's like, are you alone? You know? Um, hey, how are the girls?
Everybody's good.
Good.
Yeah. Adams, her is calling, hang on.
Hello everyone.
Hey, how are you Mike?
Doing well?
Good.
Uh.
Hello.
Give me a moment to get my agenda up here, so I'm gonna mute. Peter Brady, nice ball. One, two, three, four.
Just kind of figure it with the grid.
Five. I count five board members. Hello Melissa.
Three, four, five. Six, including you.
One, two.
Yeah, Tony wasn't, I'll give you guys details whenever we get offline here, but Tony may not be on.
Okay, very good. Okay, well, we have enough to get started here.
Yeah, there he is.
Okay. Very good. It is six o'clock. I will call the meeting to order for the May 21st regular board meeting with closed session. May 21, 2020 at six o'clock. Can we have roll call please?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
I'm here. Okay. First item of business is to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Make that motion at 6:01. Is there a second?
Second.
I know I heard someone else, might have been Tony. And then Miss Melendi, so let's have a roll call please.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Yeah.
Mr. Garin.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Yes, okay, so we're in closed session. Dr. Rowe, if I remember correctly, now we all sign off.
That is correct.
Especially when we come back.
That is correct. You have a separate link.
Okay. And we'll come back to our regular session.
I will send that link to you, because I don't believe I did.
I think I got it.
Yes, everybody else did for sure.
Okay.
Did you send that link to me Scott?
I did.
Okay, just confirming, thank you.
Okay, see y'all in closed session.
Computer audio. Sorry, I couldn't find the link to get back into the regular meeting. Okay, I think we're just about ready to get started here. Let me get the agenda back up. I lost that. I'm sorry. Hang on a second. Okay. It is 7:05. We are out of closed session. We suspended closed session, so we'll be going back into it. Let's have a roll call, please.
This is Meyerino. Here. Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yeah.
Mr. Garen?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Is Mr. Quagliano on?
No. He may not be able to attend the open session, so.
Okay.
Can we go through everybody? Miss Stock?
Yes, I did.
All right, we do have a quorum. There, as I said, there's no action to take out a closed session. That leads us to the next item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Bzinski, do you have a flag for us to? Here. There we go. Okay, you all face the flag. And. Okay. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Flag to the flag.
United States.
United States of America.
Into the Republic.
Public, for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Armstrong, do we have any public comment?
None that I'm aware of. I'll defer to Dr. Bzinski if he sees anyone in the queue.
I do not see any public attendees requesting public comment at this time.
Okay.
And we did not receive any emails requesting public comments to the superintendent account.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Moving on to revision and adoption of the agenda. Bear with me while I go through this. Ms. Lombard, do you have a report?
Not at this time.
Okay, Dr. Schlichter, I believe you do. Is that correct?
I do have a report. It will, and actually, one of them will be shared with Dr. Del Castillo as well.
Very good. Okay, looks like we have the CFO report. Mr. Altmeier, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, Mr. Zare?
I do not have a report.
Okay. Dr. Bzinski?
No report tonight, sir.
Okay. Dr. Del Castillo, other than the one you're sharing with Dr. Schlichter, do you have a report?
Not tonight.
Okay. Looks like we have some communications. We have some quick legislation. Dr. Rowe, you have a report, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Very good. Then I will, and I do not have a president's report, I'm sorry. So I would like to adopt the agenda, make a motion to adopt the agenda with the removal of items 7, 10, 11, 12, and 16. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Melendi. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Let's see. So. That takes us to item eight. Dr. Schlichter, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, for our first update, you'll see there's an attachment. It is a report out on our strategic plan achievement of looking at our professional learning communities and making the most of that additional collaboration time, specifically focused on results and outcomes that we've achieved. So you see a report there. This is going to serve as our strategic plan report out for the end of the year, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, are there any questions on that? All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, remote learning update. Dr. Schlichter, Dr. Del Castillo, is that correct?
Yes, yes. It's a shared report from Learning and Innovation, which includes both the Department of Curriculum and Student Services. And as you see, there's multiple sections. We'll just each of us draw attention to a few things. For me, you see that we focused on student engagement, obviously ongoing to keep our students safe in learning. You'll see an update on grades and accountability, looking at our assessment systems. I do just want to call your attention to the summer school section. We very much are offering a robust summer school program, specifically with additional features focused on allowing students to have individual coaching and tutoring time with teachers to make up any incomplete work or to remediate any learning gaps that are resulting from remote learning. So we've already got students signing up for that. That's going to run for 12 weeks in the summer, and we're really, really excited that we're going to offer students that one-on-one help at the secondary level. At the elementary level will be small group. And with that, I'll toss it over to Dr. Del Castillo for some highlights.
Yeah, thank you. So Special Services Remote Learning started on March 31st, and the expectations articulated in the special education guidance documented by the state of Illinois, the guidance did not create any flexibility to the mandates we need to follow. So at the Special Services team developed expectations and guidelines specific to the provision of services and timeliness of meetings. So we have two priorities. Our first priority was the continuity of special education services for the students. So we create a tool to document instructional activities offered to students through e-learning opportunities, along with their completed outcomes that reflected progress towards their goals. We have optional virtual meetings for parents to help answer their questions about e-learning services, too. Our second priority was compliance with federal and state mandates regarding meetings. So we have continued to hold meetings with parents through virtual opportunities. The majority of our parents have provided positive feedback to team members. I just want to highlight the Special Services team dedication to our students. Our staff went above and beyond to help our students achieve their goals, especially during this remote learning time.
I think that that is a theme that you will see, just a mountain of thanks to our staff members, students, parents, and our teams at the district office and our administrative team that are, they just worked so hard, worked very collaboratively together. At the end of the document, we thought you'd enjoy seeing some quotes from our staff. Those came from different meetings. It's really neat to see some of the positivity and learning that everybody's encountered. So with that, it was a much more complete document, but we'll be happy to take any questions or any discussion if anyone wants to bring anything up related to remote learning.
Are there any questions, comments?
Kind of, what were your biggest surprises or challenges along the way with implementing this, as this has unfolded?
Yeah, well, I would say sort of, probably would have answered that differently in week two than I do now, because we really learned as we went. I think one huge great surprise was the fact that we did not have really anybody, including student staff or parents, say, "We just can't do this," or, you know, get very upset about it. Everybody stepped up to the plate and said, "Here's what I need." Our staff members were fantastic, asking for professional learning, and our coaches were great at providing it. One thing we did learn, and we actually are just getting back the results of a student survey that we sent out, grades one through 11, they are very honest, and they are telling us exactly. they are very honest, and they are telling us exactly what kind of learning they liked and didn't like. In fact, one high school student sent me an extremely detailed plan for next year of what the suggestion is. They put a ton of thought to it. Our youngest learners talking about why they liked Zoom meetings and why they didn't like Zoom meetings. So I think those are surprising, but they're just great learning for us because I think it's going to move education forward, no matter what environment we're in. It'll help us meet our students' needs a little more personalized.
I think we have to acknowledge, though, that the differences in every single home contributed to what our students were and we're not able to do, and those are just simply things we can't control. So, you know, I heard from a handful of parents and had some really great conversations around, you know, where I had a call with a parent just yesterday, offering feedback, following up their child's survey of, you know, they're both first responders, and they, you know, work different shifts. And so they're kind of passing each other as one finishes a shift and the other heads into work. And so that burden of learning at the kitchen table, a lot of times, is happening at times that aren't necessarily conducive to the best learning for the student, and they just kind of have to roll with the punches. So we have a huge kudos to our families for stepping up and really being, you know, the teachers, the side-by-side teachers with their students. Our teachers did an exceptional job, but our families really rose to the challenge as well and met us where we needed them to be, and this is a great partnership, but not without challenge. Special Ed was a real challenge. It was very, very difficult to meet all of the regulations that we tried very hard to do. Additionally, like I said, we can't control what goes on in a lot of our students' homes, but our goal was not to be, education should not be the burden that is that final straw that breaks the camel's back. We just want, we felt it was our responsibility to keep the focus on learning for our students, to give them a sense of normalcy. And I think we achieved that, but this time is very challenging, and our parents, not only were very gracious, but they've been very honest in the feedback that they provided to us.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on that? Thank you both. Appreciate it. Moving on. And please bear with me, everyone. I've got too many windows open and I can't find my agenda. Okay, item nine, CFO, Treasurer, Mr. Altmeier, nine point one fiscal services reports.
Thank you very much. I have three updates from the fiscal services memo to the executive summary financial report for the month, as well as the second draft of the budget. In front of you, you should have the monthly fiscal updates memo. Nothing too major to report that I'm not going to probably address via the budget, so I would be happy to answer any questions on that report if you have any.
Any questions on that? Okay, thank you. Next item?
Next item is the March 2020 Financial Executive Summary for the third quarter ended. We are beginning to track, well, a little favorable to budget with the March month-end close. April has been closed, and that will be shared next month with you. That was just recently closed a few days ago before we posted everything for the board, and we're generally about a month and a half behind. That said, the reason I want to bring that up is, well, there are favorable lines as a result of this pandemic. So we are seeing favorability in salaries now because of some small amounts of extra duty. Substituted teaching cost appears to be favorable, about $230,000. We also have unfilled positions that we always have every year that is probably going to have that line item for salaries alone be four to $500,000 favorable at the end of the year, again, primarily driven by the pandemic. Health insurance benefits, right? We were trending right at budget, in fact, probably trending a little over budget in healthcare claims. Since March 16th, we've seen our claims, well, they're dropping down pretty quickly as a result of a lot of people not having a lot of things done and/or going to the doctor. So with, within your report, you will see that the March claims are the low of the year at $577,000. And next month, when you see the April report, you'll see that, well, 577,000 continued to decrease in April to $415,000 of claims. So we will see, we anticipate, right? Depending upon what we see in May and June, but we do anticipate being $500,000 to $700,000 potentially favorable on the health insurance line. So it's a good thing in that people are staying away, and maybe they're learning to manage their health a little better, but at the same time, we don't know how many procedures have been pushed off that we will see, you know, be incurred next year. So that is a financial risk that we're taking for next year's budget. And then we have a lot of other miscellaneous line items, like building supplies and building budgets. Once they left the building at March 16th, we kind of held a freeze on a lot of the buildings, and we have several hundred thousand dollars of favorability in various supply items. We've got a little, we have favorability in energy cost. So we do have some favorability, and we may see about a 1% to a 1.5% overall favorability in the FY '20, June 30th FY '20 budget. So I just want to prepare the board for that, so they're aware, but, which is a good thing because when I present the budget to you, the reason I'm presenting it in this section and not as an action item is, well, let me ask you this, before I get to the budget. Are there any questions on the current year March executive summary report?
I have a question.
Sure.
In regards to the insurance, so for next year, any ideas or thoughts on how the carrier would look at insurance rates for next year, given that we have this pause for a couple months of claims?
Well, really good question, and that, you know, that's an actuarial review that will need to take place and is part of our annual, you know, review and update of our premiums that takes place with Blue Cross Blue Shield. But I have an email out to our broker to see if Blue Cross Blue Shield can give me that answer, right? Can we do an actuarial review right now based on our experience of the plan and the known claims that we have within the plan? Because generally, from an actuarial standpoint, it's really not based on a dip of one or two months in claims. It's really based on, well, what's the experience of the plan? What's the health of the plan? How many large claims and how many folks do we have that have diabetes? And how many folks do we have that have heart issues? How many folks do we have, right, various issues? So it's more based on the age of our participants and the overall experience of the plan. But we're hoping to get an answer before we have to wait till September, October, November timeframe before we have open enrollment, right, for January of next year. An open enrollment, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but it's November timeframe.
That's correct.
So, but very good question, Paul. And so that's why we're going down the path of working with our broker on that to better understand, you know, are we going to see a blip or are we not?
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions on the executive summary report? Okay, the reason I bring that up and I wanted to ask that question is because the reason we put the FY '21 draft to of the budget in this section is, and it's not an action item for approval, is because, well, on this draft, I really wanted to explain the overall pandemic implications and the crisis that's going on and what are the potential, well, decreases in revenue and increases in costs that we can expect to see so that we then know, and the board has a good foundational understanding of the budget cuts and/or deferrals that need to take place to balance the budget in the next draft. So in the next draft, we'll also include the five-year plan, and it'll be an actionable draft because it'll be June, and we do want good marching orders to start the year with come July 1st. So for this purpose, I did, as I did last month, I'm going to share my screen because I do have a brief PowerPoint to cover some of the financial implications of COVID and things that we can expect to see in the next draft that I present in June. So let me see if I can do this. I'm not as good as Mr. Bzinski, but I'm pretty good. Let's see. Okay. Okay, can everybody give me a thumbs up that you see the first page of the PowerPoint? Okay, that's good because it's on a different screen from me. Okay. So we're going to, we're going to go through this here. So what are we going to cover? Just big picture, FY '21 budget draft two. We're going to get to the end. I'm going to show you a chart that outlines 18 and 19 actuals, the FY '20 budget, as well as what the expectation is with the current assumptions that I have that we'll walk through for the financial implications of COVID-19, and then we'll just talk about next steps briefly, okay? This is kind of a brief reminder, but we did make some revenue and expense key assumption changes, okay? So CPI for 2019 is locked and loaded. That's good to go, and that's, that does impact the FY '21 budget, okay? CPI for the 20 levy year is set at 2.3%. That's locked and loaded. So property taxes for next year are pretty good. What's not good is new construction, and we'll talk about that in one of the upcoming slides, but we did decrease the assumption of new construction to $7 million for next year's levy year because we think, you know, we might see a lot of activity going on, but I do feel that with this pandemic, that not as many people are getting out buying new houses. And I think it's a pretty good assumption. So we did decrease the new construction by 5 million, from 12 million there, down to 7 million. State revenues, we made an assumption there, a decrease of $675,000, which is a total impact of 1.35 million. We'll talk about that and a little more in the next couple slides. Expenses reflect the current collective bargaining agreement. So the current contract on the table for next year with our HEA union, any increase over step of 3.5% is not reflected. So I want to make sure the board is aware of that. We're not making any assumptions on that line item, other than 3.5%. All non-union salaries follow HESPA in this, so, and then obviously, HESPA salaries are accounted for. Health insurance is currently budgeted and increased 5%, and that's what we've been using for the last couple of years. Workman's comp and property and liability insurance, that's showing a 5% increase. Just within the last week, though, we did receive the final premium notices. And so we will be adjusting some of those to actuals, so stay tuned on that. I'll report on that next month. And capital expenditures, as we talked about last month, increased by $678,000 due to bus purchases and the propane buses. All right. So I'm just going to jump right to it. The last draft of the budget, which really just reflected just some key assumption changes, right? We were showing a deficit of $272,000, which was driven by the deficit in the transportation fund, again, because, well, we're setting aside $1.6 million for the purchase of new buses, those propane buses that the board approved. This draft of the budget is showing over almost a $2.1 million deficit, all driven, I say all, but you'll see why I say that, almost all driven by the pandemic and the COVID-19 and our response to COVID-19. But this month, this number, I have to caution you, could be double, it could be triple, right? Because we don't 100% know how we're going to operate come the fall. Based on the new CDC guidelines, there may be a lot more additional cost that we're not covering here because we still have to figure that out and quantify that and understand how we're going to operate in this environment moving forward, okay? So let me show you what really, what drove that about $2 million change that you're looking at, okay? This is a chart we looked at last month. And let's just focus over here on the right-hand side. So we broke this up into revenue from local to state to federal, and then we jump into the material expenses. We talked about property taxes. With property taxes decreasing for the levy year 2020 for new construction, it's about $125,000 reduction in overall property taxes. So by bringing new construction down $5 million for that half a year period of time at our current tax rate is about a loss of about $125,000 of new additional revenue. Impact fees, right? As a result of the same, we can expect to see a decrease in impact fees with a decrease in new construction. So we reflected in this draft a decrease in that line item of about $100,000. Just to note, that is non-operating, okay? That is sitting in the capital projects fund, but did want to point that out here. Student registration fees, we know one thing is for certain, right? Unemployment is way up in our 11% to 12% free and reduced rate. Well, that's going to climb as well, and with an increased free and reduced rate, and we will see more waivers come through for waiving of registration fees. And so that annual approximate $1.4 million that we receive in registration fees, we are expecting that to be reduced by about $100,000 within this draft. We'll have a better idea of that, obviously, at the beginning of the school year, but then the budget may be passed already, okay? We have rental fees. We did knock down rental fees because we're not renting our facilities over the summer. In fact, we're pretty certain we're not going to rent them in the fall either because we're not going to be in the proper phase to be renting or wanting to rent our facility. So we are seeing a decrease in rental fees. Food services, you know, I say yet to be determined there because, you know, operational scenarios and those operational reviews and planning groups that we have today are discussing, well, how are we going to operate moving forward? How are we going to operate under those CDC guidelines? And under those guidelines, we don't know how much, if any, additional cost is going to be needed, right? Will we, will we need to hire additional folks to get lunches to classrooms, you know? Can we serve in the lunchroom? I don't think so. I think we're going to have to figure out how to get lunches into classrooms and doing so with our small food services staff of three to five people per elementary building. That's, that's not enough to get that job done, so we're working through that. So that's why I say operational review. Interest revenue, right? This is not 100% related to the pandemic, but interest, this is a function of the economy, that's for sure. And I talked about this last month. We are budgeting a decrease in interest revenue by about $200,000, but the fact is, it's actually about $400,000 less than the current year because the current year, we did pretty good with a net effective interest rate of about 2.3%. We're going to be lucky to hit 1% next year based on the current rate environment. And again, that's assuming that that current rate environment stays the same, and the economy doesn't pick up for the next 12 months, but I think we need to make that assumption. We get into state revenues, okay? The $675,000, that is our additional EBF tiered money for one year, is $675,000. So we feel, I feel pretty comfortable that we're not getting that for sure, right? And there's talk that they can go back a year or two years or to the beginning of the evidence-based funding and take our additional tiered dollars away. And, you know, we've heard a lot of different things. We've heard, we've heard billions of dollars. We've heard there's going to be a $2 billion cut to education, and a $2 billion cut to education could mean a five to nine million dollar cut to our school district. So what I'm budgeting here is just two years of EBF at $675,000 a year. We've also heard, and we don't know if it's just a political statement or not, that, well, the state wants to hold us, well, they want to hold us harmless to the current year FY '20 funding. And if that's the case, and if that happens, well, then it's only a $675,000 impact. But I'm putting in 1.35 because, well, the state, well, we haven't received a federal bailout. The state hasn't issued bonds. They're talking about trying to issue $4 billion of bonds, but we're this close to being a junk status and trying to issue $4 billion worth of bonds. When you're that close to junk status is really, oh, it's not a good idea, but it's a little harder than you think. So that's a $1.35 million reduction in state revenues. CPPRT, corporate personal property replacement tax, that's all driven based on corporate earnings. Corporate earnings for the state are, the majority of businesses in the state are small businesses, and we know small businesses are probably not going to be reporting earnings this year. So this will impact us next year and beyond. I estimated a 25% reduction. It could be more, but a 25% reduction is $109,000. Filings for free and reduced, well, here's a positive item. With free and reduced going up, we will receive some additional federal money to the tune of about $175,000. And if you recall the last slide where I said the decrease in registration fees could be $100,000, this actually shows an income pickup because generally, we get a little more money. Because generally, uh, we get a little more money, um, because those additional dollars help cost, uh. Help cover the cost of our staff that it takes to operate the food services department. We have Medicaid, yet to be determined title funds. Um, as I talked, uh, last time, we have a hundred and eighty-three thousand, which is actually now solidified at a hundred and eighty-four thousand. Coming from the Cares Grant, uh, which will come through via, uh, kind of like a title money. And we've just received notification as to how to go through that application process. So that's on the revenue side. So thank you for staying with me. I would love to answer any questions you have up until this point on revenue. Anybody?
Anyone?
All right. So we can keep going. I, I did want to pause because I, I feel like I'm talking a lot.
I do have a question.
Sure.
So I, I know this is, uh, getting out the crystal ball a little bit, but how, how deep of a, or how wide of a margin could this be from that revenue side?
That's, I wish I knew, Paul. Um, we don't know, right? Because on one hand, we're hearing legislatively, they would love to hold all school districts harmless. And they would love to come up with the funding, whether it's a federal bailout or it's the issuance of bonds. But is that amount, whether it's the federal bailout or is it the amount of bonds they issue? Is it gonna be enough to fill the seven to eight billion dollar hole that, that's the number we're hearing? And we're hearing it from Pritzker. Um, I don't know. I don't know. I don't feel good about it because when you look, when you look back at the Great Recession, we took a much larger cut than one point three million dollars. Education got hit really hard. They cut transportation forty percent. They reduced the early childhood grants. They took away ADA grants. They did so many different things back in two thousand eight through ten timeframe. They started to prorate, right, the foundation level and general state aid. It was more than this one point three million, and this is, this is way worse than the Great Recession, if you will, of two thousand and eight. Yeah, I, I wish I could give you a better answer. I know some districts that are budgeting a decrease in revenue by multi-million dollars and, and they're at the same tier we are. But we're being cautious here, and I'm telling you, I'm, I'm being cautious. I'm not being conservative. Because if I was conservative, it would be four years of EBF and it'd be two point seven million.
Right. And, and I looked at, like everyone else, uh, depending on your point of view, either chapter one or, or the last chapter of the book. And, and saw what your, your projection is from a deficit for this year in the, in the latest draft. So if, if this number turns out to be even worse, then that eats into the fund balance even more so and makes the deficit for the year. You know, it could double or worse. I don't even know if it could get to triple, but certainly two to, to four million dollars. It sounds like that's realistic.
Mm-hmm. And I, you know, I, I don't want to say we can't, we could overcome this for one year. And I'm not talking about eat, going into fund balances. We can defer capital projects. We can defer a lot of things. We can kick, we could start kicking the can down the road again.
Yeah, we've done that.
I used to love that line. Uh, a, and that is probably our first course of action, because the last thing we want to do now, um, is impact the classroom, right? We want to do everything we absolutely can do to keep this, keep this out of the classroom, especially now, right? Because we, we don't know, there might be additional costs here that we're gonna have to incur to make education work. Uh, right. So on that point too, to your point, it could get a little worse. And, and so I do have some expense items. Let's just jump into expense here really quick.
Thank you.
Health insurance, right? That's reflecting a five percent increase, but there's always risk. There's always risk with health insurance. That's part of my memo, always part of my memo. The really, the risk here is that we are seeing a declining, uh, declining claim since March. And are we gonna see that rapidly pick up, uh, for procedures not performed in, well, next fiscal year, right? July, August and September. So we'll have to monitor that. And that's kind of why I'm hoping to reach out to, uh, our broker on, uh, obtaining an actuarial review. Contract custodial. Okay. Um, we are gonna save some money on contract custodial in the current year. They furloughed half of their employees, um, starting May first. So for the months of May and June, we're saving approximately. I might get this wrong, but I think it's fifty thousand, might be closer to sixty thousand dollars a month. So that's gonna also help the current year, but that's also gonna help us in the month of July, because we're also doing it for the month of July. I'm showing an a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in custodial. And from an operational perspective, we know that if the kids come back to school, we're gonna have to step up our cleaning. We're gonna have to clean every room every day. We're gonna have to step up our disinfecting and just even cleaning in the middle of the day, right? We don't know exactly how much. We just know it's gonna be a lot more manpower to get that done. And working with Doug, we kind of came up with some numbers, but until we have a final plan, you know, this is an estimate. So, um, that's a two, almost a two hundred thousand dollar swing with this hundred and fifty thousand, because we know we're gonna save fifty thousand dollars in the month of July. So I want you to remember that. So that's custodial unemployment insurance. We know we're gonna see an increase in unemployment insurance, because we already have forty to fifty substitute teachers that did file for unemployment. That, um, did receive unemployment. So I did increase that line item because we'll see the bills for this last quarter next, in next year, and we'll have to pay those bills. Uh, we did hear as part of the CARES Act for all self-funded, um, unemployment insurance. Payers, providers, if you will, us, um, that there is a fifty percent rebate that may be available that we can recover. So, um, so, uh, Mr. Zair and, and myself will continue to monitor that, um, to make sure that we go through the process to recover. Any of those dollars that we can recover that can come back to us, but we will expect to see an increase on that line item. Uh, substitute teachers yet to be determined, right? I, I will say probably one thing is for sure, we're gonna have a lot of people out from students to staff next year, uh, based on, um, you know, if this comes roaring back in the fall. And, and we've got staff that need to stay away for fourteen days. It could be significant. I did not increase this line item. Um, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out how to manage through that and what to estimate for that line item. Last page on expenses, energy costs. Well, here's, here's a positive line item. We're gonna see some, some very favorable energy, uh, in the summer months, because we're not renting our buildings. Um, and as a result of, uh, solar, uh, obviously, uh, and activating solar, which we're hoping is gonna be in the month of June, July. Uh, we should still see another a hundred thousand dollars of savings, um, on that line item. You may ask, why isn't it two hundred thousand dollars? Well, because last year's budget, I actually reflected a hundred thousand dollars of those solar savings. And this is the second one hundred thousand dollar chunk. Um, and we did yield savings for the current year in energy, but it had nothing to do with solar. It, it was because we shut our buildings down and solar has been kicked back month after month after month. And we really didn't recognize any solar savings in the current year. It's just, we haven't been using our buildings, obviously, the last two and a half months. Uh, capital projects yet to be determined. Right now, they're the same as what they were on the first draft. Uh, transportation. We, again, we, this is a line item that operationally, once we figure out how we're gonna operate in the new pandemic world at the start of the school year. There may be additional costs within the transportation environment. Building budgets, you know, we're, we're gonna look at building budgets. There might be some saving opportunities there. We may have to cut some of those supplies and building budgets a little bit. Cautiously, because we want to keep those costs again out of the classroom if we can. Uh, and technology as well, there's a planning group looking at, um, what we can do from a technology perspective. Is there anything additional we should be doing from a technology perspective, um, come the start of the school year? So a few additional costs there that we have yet to quantify. Um, so going back, right, to this chart. That's what's driving the changes here from revenue to expense, um, driving a two point one million dollar deficit. That we will, um, in the next draft, you will see and will outline, um, some opportunities that we have and things we could do internally to keep costs out of the classroom. And present you and the community with a balanced budget. So with that, I, uh, hopefully that didn't take too long. Um, I just opened it up for questions. And we'll continue to keep the board apprised.
Thank you, Mr. Altmeier. Are there any questions from the board?
Can you bring the previous slide up for a second?
Oh, yeah. Uh, look at that. I was quick draw right there. Hold on a second. Let me, let me share my screen again. Okay, uh, you want to see the expenses, uh, Mr. Troy?
Yes, please.
Uh, that one?
No, no, the, the colored.
Oh, this one. I'm sorry. There you go.
The summary. Yeah. Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah. And, and within your memo, uh, Paul, the, the budget memo, um, I provide pretty detailed explanations as to the modification, uh, the change in revenue dollars. As well as the change in operating expenditures.
Right, I saw that.
Driving that, right?
Okay.
Because in a previous, like in the last draft, I explained why salaries are not down. Well, they're up, but we did, right? We did have a, a reduction as well in overall headcount that helped with the salary line item. So there's a lot of different things in that memo, which will help guide you through the budget.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Any other questions? Anybody? Okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Altmeier, thank you very much for, uh, going through the, um, analysis for the impacts, positive and negative. Is gonna be a challenge trying to hit this moving target, but I think, I think we've got the issues nailed down. So thank you very much. Moving on. Uh, I think, let's see, ten, eleven, twelve, we're on to item thirteen, uh, community engagement. We've got some, uh, FOIA requests. I'll give it to Mr. Armstrong if you have anything, sir.
You have the report. I'll be happy to take any questions on it.
Okay, it's pretty straightforward. Any questions on this? All right. No news is good news. And I once again lost my agenda. I am so sorry, everyone. Okay, on to legislation committee. I just received an email during the meeting from IASB, and let me see if I can pull that up. To share with you the latest from Springfield, and, uh, if anybody has, um, input on what's happening down there or what's not happening down there, other than what we've already talked about, please let me know. But, um, looks like there is some, uh, revisions for K-12 education. The bill is amended, codifies many of the provisions previously contained in executive orders by the governor and guidance documents and emergency rules promulgated by the State Board of Education. So what's happening with Senate, Senate Bill fifteen sixty-nine is they're just basically trying to take the executive orders, pass them through the legislature to make them, um, uh, full statutes. There's some, uh, Senate Bill eighteen fifty-seven for retired teachers, uh, to become substitute teachers and some, uh, some streamlining of that. If anybody has any input on the details of that, I'd be happy to hear it. Okay, uh, and then there's, uh, Senate Bill four seventy-one, House Bill two twenty-four fifty-five, uh, containing language for the Omnibus Labor Management Bill. More to be said about that hopefully next, next month. Uh, other than that, um, does anybody have any comments on, uh, how things are moving down in Springfield? Leslie, do you have any, uh, Ms. Melandi, do you have any comments on, uh, or any insight as to what, uh, what's going on down there?
I do not.
Okay. So no news is good news.
Yeah, I, I don't know if anybody watched. It, it's, it's a very surreal scene down there. But I don't, I think they're still actively working on the budget. I do think that they want to try to do what they can for education dollars. So I, I, I think they're really negotiating in good faith and, uh, as far as I know, it, it's, it's very cordial so far. So they're just trying to work through. I mean, obviously, there's gonna be cuts, uh, for everybody at, in some way or another. We're all gonna feel a little bit of that, but I, I, I do have, um, faith that they're not going to completely cut education. Um, I think worst case, we're gonna see the whole, hold harmless like Mr. Altmeier was talking about.
Very good. Okay. Well, thank you. Um, with that, I will turn it over for item fifteen to Dr. Rose, Superintendent's Report.
Take myself off of mute. All right. Um, so for my report this evening, I'm actually sharing results of, of a, uh, of a service that we engaged in, uh, last fall that, with District Management Group, uh, to conduct a, a special education opportunities review. And what this is, is this is a third-party comprehensive, um, review of all of our, uh, educational services that we offer in the district as they lead towards, uh, students being eligible for IEP. And, and the special services that we offer. This, and I'd like to go through, it, it turned out to be a, a one hundred and sixty-eight slide report. Um, that then we condensed down and shared with you, and then I've condensed even further for tonight's presentation, so I can hit the highlights and then, uh, address any questions that, that exist. So I'm gonna share my screen now and walk through the highlights of the report. All right. So PowerPoint was not cooperating with me, so bear with me here as I just kind of scroll through this. But I want to, to highlight with the process itself, and the, and the process was really, really interesting. This group is, is fantastic. I've, I've, I've had some wonderful professional learning opportunities since becoming a member of this organization. But they conducted onsite interviews, uh, with administrators, with teachers, with our support staff, with some of you, with parents. Um, and, and then looked at all of our data in terms of student performance data to our, uh, identification rates for identifying students who are eligible for IEP. When are they, when, when they are identified, as well as the time that our staff are spending, uh, in thirty-minute increments over a week's period. To kind of do a, a time study of, of how they are, are conducting their day. Um, and this, this spanned over two different school years. We started in the spring and finished up this fall. Coordinating in a report this winter, we actually originally intended on delivering a very comprehensive, uh, presentation to you last month. But our current circumstances have prevented that, and I didn't want this to delay any longer, as a lot of our teachers are eager, um, to dive into this report as well. We start off with a little bit of just information, and I'm gonna go into some commendations and then hop into the, the specifics of the recommendations that they're providing to us. Um, just for, for, uh, comparison purposes, uh, we, we recognize that we, we are identifying twelve percent of our student population have become eligible for, uh, an IEP. Uh, you can see the comparison to the state and national average. This was a commendation of ours, because they believe that our, um, identification process is very strong. Uh, and we are identifying the students who, who need an IEP, uh, at, at a high level. Some of the areas that they pointed out that are areas of emphasis where we are over identifying are the areas in orange. Most importantly, our, our English language learning population. So we need to tighten our processes, uh, on how we're identifying students and not allowing some of the, um, some of the obstacles to, to learning in, in our American system. That are not language barriers, that are not barriers to, uh, the environment in which the student coming from maybe a lower socioeconomic status. And you'll see that African-American Latinos and males are identified at a slightly higher rate, uh, than the general average of the district. These are our identif- identification rates across the district. Uh, eighty, the fact that eighty-seven percent of our students who are referred for an IEP and enter the domain process become eligible is a strength to our RTI process. Meaning the interventions that our students receive prior to entering the domain are working. And those students are then entering back into the general ed tier one classroom. Um, and the higher numbers that, uh, of those that are identified at the lower grades is exactly how this should be working. The identification rates being very high at the upper grades, most likely are move-ins, students that, that spent a few years in the, uh, in the intervention process. Uh, that ultimately did warrant an IEP. All right. So a few of the commendations, five to, to point out, our elementary reading interventions are in place across the district. Uh, that was a, a, a high, high grades that we received from this group. We're focused on supporting student social emotional needs. Uh, it's an area that we continue to focus on. We definitely have more growth needed. Uh, but it was, it was evident in all of the interviews that they did. We definitely have more growth needed, uh, but it was, it was evident in all of the interviews that they did that there was an area of emphasis already in the school district. At the high school level, our special education teachers are typically supporting students in only one subject. You'll see that come back around later when I talk about content-strong educators. Uh, the district has a lower operating spend per pupil than the Illinois State average, obviously meaning we're efficient with the dollars that we do have, and the district offers a strong continuum of supports, providing additional services to students, uh, meaning our process towards the domain, uh, review are actually very strong. So our opportunities for consideration, they identified, uh, five areas that we'll go through. We'll walk through one by one, uh, and then touch a little bit on the detail and then go to their recommendations. Um, if at any point you need more detail, it's in the presentation that you already have, or I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, but the first opportunity for consideration that they gave us was ensuring that our tier-one instruction, uh, that our teachers are well-equipped and, and, and the instructional supports through the instructional coaching process is very strong. Um, just to, to show some best practice here, in terms of professional learning, you know, best practice and research shows that five percent, we with, we, we hold on to five percent of the information that we receive in lecture. We hold on to five percent more when we're practicing it, but when, with regular coaching and that constant feedback loop, our retention rate is extremely high, um, which is why instructional coaching is such a, a strong practice. Um, and one of our commendations that it is, it is, uh, well-organized in our school district, but we do have some areas for improvement. Our coaching model is basically voluntary on the teacher's part. Uh, it's on-demand professional learning. Only at the high school are first-year teachers required to engage with instructional coaches. Uh, building leaders have the autonomy, autonomy to use them, because oftentimes our instructional coaches are, are really, uh, strong building-level leaders, the teacher level, um, and so they're utilized in, in many areas as needed for staff development or just, uh, leading initiatives in the building. And coaching is viewed by our staff as optional, but not evaluative support. The non-evaluative support was a very intentional, um, component to our, to our program, and we're very proud of that because when it becomes, when it's perceived as being evaluated, uh, it can have a negative effect on the teacher's willingness to, to participate, but the fact that it's optional, uh, we would like to see more of our teachers feeling the need to, to engage. They recommend setting some strict guidelines for instructional coaches that clearly outlines their roles and responsibilities, like a, a strengthening in our coach's handbook, aligning expectations across all buildings of their roles and expectations. As I mentioned before, only first-year teachers at the high school are required to, uh, to engage. They're recommending that, that be required of all first-year teachers in the district. And then setting expectations for frequency and how are, are coaches, the parameters of how they should spend their time. Uh, for instance, an example, we expect that you spend seventy percent of your time, um, engaged in, in one-on-one coaching with teachers. We don't have those, that tight of parameters. They're recommending that we, uh, put a team together and evaluate that. The second consideration was ensuring that our interventions for students, uh, in special needs and struggling learners are provided with staff with deep content expertise. Let me go into a little bit of detail about that. Um, but special education teachers are reading interventionists, as well as our RTI facilitators are touched by this content-strong, um, recommendation. A little bit of feedback as to what that is in some, in some content or context here. A content-strong content expert, say math, I'm a, I'm an expert in math, therefore I support our special education students in only math. Uh, pedagogical expertise, I, I'm, I'm great at coaching teachers on, on specific instructional styles. A social worker would have strong social, emotional expertise, and then some teachers, some of our special education teachers are experts at the case management process, run a perfect IEP meeting, um, and that may be where their, their expertise lies. Content-strong, they, they, they specialize. So to give some context as to what our teachers are currently doing, at the elementary level, thirteen of our special education teachers are teaching two or more subjects, all teach reading and math, seven are teaching three or more subjects, most likely in a self-contained classroom. At the middle school, you see that, uh, five teachers are teaching two, six-three, and four teachers teaching four. Uh, and the, and the argument is, if a teacher's teaching multiple subjects, how can they be content experts? And while we agree with that in theory, there's obviously, uh, staffing and FTE component that we're going to have to figure out, um, as we evaluate this, uh, and, and can we maneuver to, to create the environment where true content experts can exist, or do we have to have some trade-off? We don't know that yet. At the high school, it's less of a concern because they typically do, um, focus on one subject. Our self-contained teacher's a little bit different, but, um, that's a part of the process. So, so the, the recommendations for us to consider is setting guidelines to increase the amount of time our special ed teachers spend working directly with students. Uh, in the middle school, guiding them and, and readjusting our, our structure so that they are specializing, uh, for inclusion teachers having one math teacher, one science teacher, one social studies teacher. And then our reading interventionists and RTI facilitators, um, clarifying their roles and responsibilities, addressing the obstacles, uh, that they have, and then guidelines of, of what they should be doing and how much time of their day, what percentage of their day should they be spending directly working with students? And then aligning the role of the facilitator across buildings so it's consistent, no matter the building that you're in. Um, how much time should they be spending with students? How much time should they be supporting other staff members on that tier-one instructional intervention? All right, opportunity number three was our work with paraprofessionals and what we should be doing and how we should really be utilizing our paraprofessionals. Um, common paraprofessional, uh, practice of the first four bullets, which genuinely, generally support behavior needs, health needs, uh, support in the, uh, in the classroom. We have a higher percentage of our paraprofessionals that are providing academic support than best practice would indicate. They, best practice in DM is recommending that, uh, content experts really are the classroom teachers, the specialists and special education teachers, and we should consider shifting responsibility for academic support away from paraprofessionals and towards those content experts. Obviously, as I said before, there's an FTE component to that, uh, and dollars that, that would have to be considered before we would take any kind of action. Uh, we could also invest, uh, our time and energy in, into, uh, supporting our paraprofessionals in those content areas so they can provide that, uh, appropriate level of support without having to be that content expert, all things that would be under consideration. So the paraprofessionals here, we're talking about special education paraprofessionals as well as RTI paraprofessionals. Uh, to give you some context across the elementary where, uh, where this lives, you can see a wide range of, of who provides academic support versus non-academic support, and that's what we would need to balance. Uh, consistency across our buildings is, is needed, and this was eye-opening for us as to how we, uh, how we are utilizing those, those important roles in our district. Their considerations are outlining the roles and responsibilities of paraprofessionals, so they're consistent across the building. Um, those roles and responsibilities on, should they be spending most time on supportive behavioral and health needs versus academic, and then an action plan to, uh, properly train them on some of the needs that, that, that they've, uh, expressed. The fourth opportunity that they would like us to consider is ensuring social, emotional, and behavioral supports provided proactively across schools in the district. As, as I mentioned before, that was one of the commendations that they gave us, but as we all know, this is an area of emphasis for us. So we're focusing here on social workers and guidance counselors. I know our counselors prefer school counselor, uh, as a title, so I'll refer to them as counselors and, and leave that guidance counselor alone. Um, but you can see here that even across some of our buildings, our social workers are spending their time differently. Uh, so again, it's, 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 they're emphasizing the need for consistency across the buildings and guidelines of, do we want our social workers spending the majority of their time on student instruction in the classroom and a whole group instruction? Would we rather than have, focus our time on groups and counseling? Um, and as you can see, their time in crisis varies, uh, depending on special programs. Martin has a, a good number of special programs in the building, which is probably why that, that percentage is a little higher in terms of crisis. And the considerations they'd like us to look at are facilitating discussions for streamlining meetings and paperwork to pull some of the excess administrative work off of their plate so they can focus more time on, on specifically supporting students and then executing the action plan, um, to, to allow paraprofessionals to begin to de-escalate that behavior. So in the time of crisis, we're not immediately calling a social worker. Uh, we have some strategies in the classroom that we can train our paraprofessionals to use, so that they feel confident that they can de-escalate some of the initial behavior before we have to pull a social worker in. Finally, expanding the reach of our related service providers, uh, to closely manage group size. Uh, we don't want our, our, the groups that our social workers work with to become too large so that they can properly support our students. They would like us to consider, uh, setting certain guidelines, um, pulling some IEP case management responsibilities off of their plates so they can spend more time with students, developing guidelines for group sizes, I mentioned, as well as, uh, refining some guidelines for thoughtful sched- scheduling of those related service providers. Um, that was a very fast, very high-level, uh, presentation over a very comprehensive, uh, presentation and report. I would encourage you to dive into, uh, into the more detailed presentations that I sent you. I'm happy to answer any questions, but to kind of, to lay out our plan moving forward, this is a, a comprehensive recommendation that they've given us of things they would consider, they would like us to consider based on their expertise, best practice, comparison with other districts around the country. What our plan to do is, um, is pull together some action groups primarily in these, in these first three, uh, looking at our instructional coaching, and if you remember, that was tightening up the guidelines on how much time we'd like our coaches spending doing specific tasks, ensuring it's consistent across all of the buildings, um, and, and really defining that role of what our expectations are. Um, content-strong instruction is a really big one. There's a lot of, of, of areas that we can tackle here from reorganizing how our case management is done to who, which teachers are teaching. Um, should our teachers maybe be focusing on c- content-strong instruction and only teaching a subject and not having a case management to manage while others are focusing on simply case managing, and they don't have an instructional responsibility, or all things that are on the table here? Um, and then paraprofessionals, guidelines and support, we have a, a, a new, a group that'll focus on what paraprofessionals need in terms of, uh, continued learning, but then also setting those guidelines as to how they spend their time and what our expectations of them are, since it is more academic than they are recommending. How do we begin that shift? Can we begin that shift? And we'll be developing action plans, uh, for all three of those areas to start with, and we'll come back to you with, uh, with action reports as they develop. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them at this point.
Are there any questions? Okay, uh, I, I know for me, I would love to see if you could send that presentation by email so we can kind of digest it a little deeper. It's, there's a lot there, like you said, and, and I'd like to kind of unpack it and take a, take a look at those recommendations more closely.
Absolutely, and, and one of the things that I also will be doing is we owe a presentation. When this, when this began, we, you know, Ms. Lombard and I traveled to each school and met with the, the full special education staff per building and explained what our goals were and what we were going to do. I still owe them a, uh, a presentation as well. So, uh, what I'll be doing is I'll be recording a presentation, probably a little bit more comprehensive than this, um, and I'll be sure to share that video recording with you so you can, um, listen and, and that may help. So you have two different ways of consuming the, uh, the information.
Sure, yeah, I, I know that as a board, this is one of the things that we really want to, uh, focus on, and, uh, and, and this is a, a big step in that direction. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, okay, next item, uh, there's no president's report, on to policy committee, Ms. Myerino Shidline. This is yours, seventeen point one, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, so yes, we have lost my place here, sorry. Um, so it looks like we have a first read of, um, some policy updates. Dr. Road, if you want to take that?
I don't have really, really too much to add to this. Um, they're, they're general, general updates from press. Uh, the big one here was a topic that we, we addressed last month, and that would be, uh, our purchases and contracts, that bottom line raising to fifty thousand dollars, that was something we addressed last month already. Uh, so that should not be new, otherwise they are, uh, uh, very simple adjustments to some footnotes and, and some legal references.
Okay, uh, any questions, comments on those? All right, these are, uh, that's for informational purposes only at this point. So, uh, moving on to building and grounds, uh, Mr. Trial, have you, uh, since you're the chair, I'll have you take the lead on these next two items.
Thank you very much. Um, so I, eighteen dot one, I'll move right to Mr. Rinkasik for any, uh, anything to highlight on the O and M updates.
Um, thank you. Only one thing to add is that we are opening the RFPs tomorrow for our guaranteed energy savings contract for the lighting retrofit, uh, which is, uh, going to be partially funded by the, uh, State Board of Education School Maintenance Grant, so more news to come on that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from, uh, well, we'll just do the regular board overall.
No.
All right, then we'll move ahead to eighteen dot two, uh, construction updates, uh, anything to highlight on this one?
Things are on schedule. Um, I'll be, uh, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I drove out there last night just to take a peek at it. Um, it looks fantastic. It's nice to see the parking lot not have any of those, uh, fence barriers up any longer. All right, if, any questions, uh, comments from the board?
Any COVID-related delays or impacts to the project from me, from what we can tell?
None. Okay, contractors are hungry to get work, so they're working, and they're working. It's a small enough project, they're, they're distancing.
Good.
All right, if there's no further questions, uh, we'll just turn it right on over to, uh, Mr. Fleck for, uh, section nineteen.
Okay, uh, nineteen point one, uh, first thing is the, uh, educate, uh, Board of Education minutes from the regular meeting from April sixteenth. Is there any, uh, questions or comments on that? Other, uh, otherwise I will make a motion to approve, uh, same.
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi. Voice call, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Uh, HR Personnel Report, um, Mr. Zir, do you have anything you want to highlight?
I don't have anything to add, just asking for the board's approval.
Okay, uh, any questions, comments on this? I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Personnel Report, uh, as, uh, presented in the agenda.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry, uh, that is a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Myerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, nineteen point three, that's Finance Committee. Normally I turn it over to Mr. Quagliano. Uh, we got our payables, impressed checks, uh, and disbursements, um, any questions, comments on that? If not, I will make a motion to approve, uh, the payables as presented in the agenda nineteen point three point one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy, roll call, please.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Myerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes, motion carries. Nineteen point three point two is the propane agreement, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. Um, last month, uh, the board did approve moving forward with AmeriGas, and if you recall, at that time, uh, the contract was not yet finalized. In working with our attorney as well as AmeriGas, uh, we were able to, um, finalize that contract, making, uh, some, uh, some minor adjustments here and there. Um, so I ask again for the board's approval of the final contract that you have in front of you. Uh, excited to move forward with AmeriGas with a five-year contract, the first two years being fixed pricing, which we talked about at the last meeting, um, and then the future pricing is variable. However, we did write language in this contract so that, um, before our two current years of fixed pricing is up, we will negotiate again so that we could lock, um, if we feel a- if we feel appropriate, lock fixed pricing for the remaining years of the contract as we move along. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, just looking forward to moving forward.
Any questions on that?
Are those individual years that get renegotiated or is it renegotiated as a lump sum for the three?
Year by year.
Year by year, okay.
Yeah, it'll be year by year because, because they have to lock in. And, and the reason we can't go beyond two years is because they can't lock in years beyond two years. So as we move forward, we will constantly be saying, okay, we're ready to lock the next year.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. With that, I will make a motion to approve the propane agreement as presented in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Garen. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Okay, that motion carries on the nineteen point three point three restricting funds resolution, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. As the board is aware, we do have a reserve for replacement and over the years and in years past, as part of the process of having a reserve for replacement, the, the board approves the reserve for replacement as part of the budget process. And when those additional dollars or when those dollars are saved and, and are ultimately part of our fund balance to make it official for the audit, so to speak, and so that we can officially restrict those via resolution. We have the board go back and then sign off on a resolution just restricting those dollars. So this is kind of a catch up. So the resolution we have in front of you is restricting the funds that we set aside for reserve for replacement for fiscal years two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, $500,000 for each year. That was part of the budget process for those years. So that's a million dollars. And we have the resolution attached, so kind of I, I'd say standard annual operating procedure. But this is kind of a catch up that includes two thousand and eighteen, which will bring our reserve for replacement, which we have, obviously we publish and we talk about to seven point five million dollars officially. That will be officially restricted that will show up in this year's audit. What's currently in last year's audit is six point five million.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Is there any questions on that? All right, I will make a motion to approve the funds, restricting funds resolution as presented in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. That leads us to nineteen point three point four, which is, which is a transfer of funds resolution, Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you. This resolution while is actually tied to the last action item. With that last action item and with the Board of Education's prior approval of the FY twenty budget, the FY twenty budget, the current year we're living in does have a transfer of 3.4 million dollars utilizing the reserve for replacement, the restricting of funds, and we need to transfer those dollars into the capital projects fund. And that is where the fine arts addition is being paid for. So again, from an accounting auditing, audit report standpoint, we need to transfer those dollars. So there is a resolution attached and because the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, I love that accounting manual because we have like 3,000 chart of accounts, by the way, that's a lot. We have to, in accordance with that program accounting manual, actually transfer the cash to make our annual financial report work, transfer the cash as it shows in the budget to, from the education fund to the operations and maintenance fund. And then from there to the, well, capital projects fund. So if it looks a little funny, it is a little funny, but that is accounting in general, so. Did you just lose me?
We did for about five seconds.
You did. Okay, so I'm not sure where you lost me, but it looks a little funny. It is a little funny. It is the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, and this is simply the resolution to move the funds from the Ed Fund to the operations and maintenance, and then ultimately to the capital projects fund.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions.
So that would make the remaining balance four point one, if I'm keeping score right?
Correct.
Yeah. And is there any distinction on? I mean, technically it's an improvement, not a replacement. Does that matter in any way?
No, great question, Kevin. We call it a reserve for replacement when, when we go through the budget process. That was a term I came up with, you know, years ago when we started to do this. But the resolution, the previous resolution that, that the board does approve when we do restrict those funds states, and I, and I'll read it for you, the sum of $1 million, this is the last resolution, the sum of $1 million currently on deposit within the Ed Fund and not designated or committed for any other purpose is hereby designated and committed for future capital improvements of the district. So that should answer the question.
Okay, so we're, we're within the boundaries of the resolution by doing this, and I, I think it makes sense.
Record of the process.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, if not, then I will make a motion to approve the transfer of funds resolution as set forth in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Hey, that motion carries. That moves us on to building and grounds committee, and we have nineteen point four point one, the dry sprinkler replacement bid number twenty twenty dash thirty seven, Mr. Rancasic.
Part of the FY twenty project list is to replace dependent sprinkler heads. NFPA requires replacement or testing after 10 years and there's no value in testing them. So we took a bid to replace them. There are several hundred of them that need to be replaced. Be happy to answer any questions.
And any questions on these bids? Looks like we had four bidders, is that correct?
We had, yes, four. Bidders we've worked with before.
All right.
All reputable companies.
Okay. Any, any more questions, comments? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve bid twenty twenty dash thirty seven as presented in the agenda. Second?
Second.
Second. I think we have Mr. Garen, very good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, very good. Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Science Review, Dr. Schlichter.
Yeah, so at the last board meeting, the board heard our presentation of the six twelve science review. We've had materials on display for 30 days with no community questions, and so we're bringing that back for approval tonight.
Okay. So we've all had a chance to take a look at that. Are there any questions on this? Okay, there being none, then I will, and this is a roll call vote. Make a motion to approve the science curriculum review as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Second from Mr. Garen. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I, I think it cut out when Mr. Gentry gave his vote. Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that motion carries. Okay, PE and Health Review, Dr. Schlichter.
Similarly, we heard last month the PE and Health Review and materials have been on display for 30 days again with no community questions. And so we bring that back tonight for approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, if there are none, then I will make a motion to approve the PE and Health Review as presented in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Garen. This is also a roll call.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Okay, that motion carries. Continuing on, Dr. Schlichter, the Huntley High School new materials.
And these new materials, it's the time of year when we would approve materials for the Huntley High School courses that the board approved earlier in the year. Just two things to note, the first is that the first class on there is our transitional math class, which is going to prepare our students for college as well as our dual credit fashion basics. And so these really follow along in some of our long-term planning. And then the only third class that we're buying materials for is that literature for fine arts class that was approved. So these would be on, on display for 30 days, and we would bring those back in June for approval.
Okay, so these have not, not been, this is, this, it's asking for a roll call on the agenda, but we have to wait 30 days, is that correct? Or is it?
Correct, yes, right, that's actually right, yep. So we would not be voting on them tonight, we would put them on display for 30 days.
Okay, so are there any questions or comments from the board on, on these materials? Okay. No, despite what the agenda says, I don't believe there's any action. Is that right, Dr. Rowe? You're muted.
I'm sorry. Action, new materials, they have to be on display for 30 days, that's correct.
Okay, okay, so we will move on with that. Thank you. We got the assessment platform again to Dr. Schlichter.
Yep, this is actually something that's been a long time coming for us, I would say probably two years in the making. So we have had the MAP, NWA MAP assessments as our progress monitoring tool in our benchmarking assessment for quite a few years in the district prior to me arriving in the district. Starting several years ago, we noticed that the particular assessment was less and less aligning with standards. We were getting discrepant data with our Illinois Assessment of Readiness that was standards aligned. And just functionally, at the time the district adopted MAP, it was really the only product on the market. We now have several very robust competitors. So we completed a very robust review actually during the course of this year. And you'll see in the report details of that review with quite a bit of data that we collected. The review resulted in us recommending that we shift from NWA MAP to the STAR three sixty assessment, which also has a preschool component called MYIGDIES, which is an acronym. And it's made by Renaissance Learning. So this assessment, just in short, would align to standards, would provide much more additional progress monitoring for learning gaps. And actually, we can administer it remotely. And what I will tell you is that those last two statements have become very, very urgent for us with this remote learning situation. So the idea that if we are in a remote situation at any point next year, this assessment could be administered where our prior assessment could not. And then we could use it to really drill down on learning gaps, and this would be grades preschool through eight. We had stopped administering MAP to eighth grade, we would be adding the STAR assessment back in for eighth grade because of the standards alignment and our ability to use that to advance our curriculum and make sure our students are not having any gaps. So you see there's a contract attached as well as the report. The funds are in the budget, they are largely a reallocation from our MAP funds with a slight increase based on adding eighth grade back into the mix. And then there also you'll see as a professional learning, it's a separate contract piece, and we will be using some of our regional office reimbursement funds to cover that. So that is in a nutshell, much more complete in the packet, but I will take any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions? I do have one myself, and you said this was for pre K through eight, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, the, the agenda, it's, it's a minor thing, the agenda said pre K through, through twelve, but this was only covering.
Pre K through eight, yep.
Okay, very good.
I have a question, Dr. Schlichter. The MAP is, after it's, it's an immediate score that comes up when you're done, is, is the STAR like that too, where you get the immediate score?
So the STAR is very similar in that sense, it's actually a shorter assessment, so the students would not have to be taking it for quite as long. And the scores would come back, we could also do more robust reporting later, and that's what we'd use for RTI or to send reports home. But yeah, it does provide that immediate feedback.
Okay, thank you. And so, sorry, processing this in my head as I'm talking. Um, so it, it, the MAP does the fall and then the mid and then the end of the year. Would you do it at a similar time then, same timing?
Okay, this would be the same. We had actually stopped doing the MAP in the fall. We were doing, actually, it was in November, it was actually the winter administration back in November. We would add this back in for the fall because it's a shorter assessment. It's actually going to give us, I think, much deeper data and much more link to our standards and our curriculum.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
Okay, anything else? All right, with that, I will then make a motion to approve the assessment platform with Renaissance Learning as presented in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give it to Mr. Gentry. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Troy? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Okay. Not one to take it away from Dr. Schlichter yet, I think we have one more.
Last one for me.
Extension.
Yes, so you know that currently we are in a contract that we've been in for the course of the school year with Education Elements. It's really one of the premier nationwide personalization and competency-based learning education system, education consulting firms. They provide just a wide range of services. They've been helping us with our Vanguard Vision Program, providing great support as we scale the program. This year, we are professional development grant funding. We're not spent because of the shutdown, and so we were able to make this recommendation to extend our contract with Education Elements. We are using our grant funds completely covered by Title II grant funds. So that is the recommendation tonight, and I will take any questions that you have.
Any questions on this? Okay. Well, thank you, and with that, I will make a motion to approve the contract extension with Education Elements as presented in the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
There you go, Ms. Melendi, thank you. Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. All right, on to student handbooks, Ms. Lombard, nineteen point five point six.
Sure, so it's that time of year that we take a look at our student handbooks. All of our buildings have had, in early winter, they had their meetings with their parent advisor groups to kind of look at the discipline areas and, and whatnot. And then there's some minor, I know it looks a, a little bit lengthy, but it's just the way it's cut and pasted in, in here. But some minor recommendations that just kind of helped clarify a little bit with our language that was in, a couple new things in the health area that I'll highlight with in terms of COVID-19 as well as a few new laws with seizure plan. in terms of COVID-19, as well as a few new laws with seizure plans and things like that that we needed to make sure were in our handbooks. So I want to just highlight a few of the areas in all three elementary and middle and then high school. What you're going to see is that there were, was the addition of the term marijuana in each of the instances where it stated drugs and alcohol. Again, because of January one, we wanted to make sure, well, yes, marijuana is a, is a drug. We wanted just to make sure that was very clear in there, whether that was students bringing that in or if it was on clothing, things like that symbols, and so you'll see some changes with that. Bullying was also in all three areas, clarifying the definition to include not only intent to hurt, but as well as intent to harm the victim, social, emotionally or physically. So again, just updating our definition there. In health services, a couple of the areas to highlight looked at the addition of symptoms persistent or undiagnosed cough as an area where maybe if other symptoms are also going on, the students might be sent home. Again, looking at the current environment that we are in. We also then added the addition of coronaviruses to the list of contagious or communicable disease list. Updated, typically we have, students would be sent home if they have a fever and can't return home for twenty-four hours. But as we know right now, CDC is recommending that could be forty-eight or seventy-two hours. Instead of coming back and forth and changing the handbook during the year, wanted to have some leeway in that. So saying that it's twenty-four hours unless the guidelines from the CDC or IDPH were to increase those timelines, and that would be something we would make sure that if that was happening for a period of time during the school year, that we would be making sure that we were educating our families on that or any changes that were going on there. Then the last part of health that you'll see is we added at the middle school and elementary level, the concussion language that we have up at the high school. Again, just to make sure, especially if you are in that remote area or remote time while they are having screen access a little bit more than they are if it's the in-person. Our nurses are still monitoring that and making sure that we are meeting any of the physician needs. Wanted to make sure that that language is at the elementary and the middle school level. And then the seizure plan, we have written seizure plans for any of our students that do have medical diagnosis or do experience seizures, we work with the physicians and the health office, but that language is embedded in there per a new law that will be taking place on July first. But that seizure plan would be updated with the, the physician and the nurses in our buildings and families on a yearly basis. And then at the middle school level, one area just that was updated, worked on with our curriculum department was looking at the area of remediation or retention, and it was to change the recommendation process for how the summer school, students are recommended for summer school, looking at their grades in the four core courses rather than just a GPA. And those changes, again, a lot of parents, when they were, were seeing that, made more sense looking at it that way rather than the current terms that were in there. And, and so it was again, just a more clear process for parents, students and staff when determining either summer school support or, or support in the RTI and other processes during the school year. Our high school has a few more changes in there that we addressed and are recommending. You'll notice a change to the attendance policy. Looking at the addition of giving an excused absence, we just changed that policy. But for two hours of voting for students who are eligible to vote that are eighteen years old, wanted to make sure that they were able to go ahead and do that, and that would be an excused absence for them. There are a few clarification things, this is process, but as it's rolling up now that the only juniors and seniors would be off campus for blended or lunch. Typically, your freshmen aren't doing that, and majority of your sophomores aren't anyway because they don't have the means or cars to be able to, to leave for lunch. Then there were just a couple clarification components on the disciplines section. Providing more examples, if they're saying states withholding privileges, they did talk about what some of those privileges it might be, it might be adding parking and off-campus or extracurricular privileges, so again, just specifying a few things there with that. Listing sort of practices under a couple different areas or dean intervention, because a lot of times they are looking at each student and what was the, the infraction and, and how to best meet the needs of that student. So again, just some more clarification there with that piece. I believe it was last year we talked about the three hundred dollars for theft when we were looking at that in terms of the legal amount that was five hundred dollars, and we wanted to make sure that that was correctly put in there if it is reflecting that of a felony. And then that was for, for as well, level four interventions and consequences. Under level four behavior and consequences, wanted to add the addition to the language inappropriate communication from electronic devices in terms of threats and add implied, direct or indirect. Again, so just a little bit more clear for our students and our parents there. Where under in-school intervention, if a student did have a 504 or an IEP, and if the consequence did necessitate an in-school intervention, wanting to make sure that parents were clear that their students, if they had a 504 or an IEP, would have access to those accommodations during that time. And I believe the health, I'm scrolling through here just to make sure I'm not missing any of those. All of the health are the, the same ones that we addressed early on with the elementary and middle school. And then one change for the athletic and activities handbook at the high school is the language recommendation. In addition to in circumstances where the student is participating in a combination of more than one athletic activity or club that the athletic director and the administration or their designees would work together to discuss what current disciplinary action would be. So they weren't just necessarily getting two or three separate things, those entities would work together. And again, we did have that situation arise a couple times, and we wanted clear collaboration and communication amongst the administrators for those situations. So that's kind of that in a nutshell, all three of the handbooks are linked on there, and the, they should be in green and red, sometimes in some blue changes to kind of highlight if you wanted to, to see that language spelled out there, but any questions on the handbooks?
Any questions from anyone? Okay, none. All right, there being none. Thank you, Ms. Lombard, I appreciate that synopsis of all the changes. We are being asked to approve the handbooks as presented, so I'll make a motion to approve the handbooks that are listed in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Garen. This is a roll call.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mrs. Myarino?
Yeah.
Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Lombard. Moving on to nineteen point five point seven, safe school resolution intergovernmental agreement.
Yes, so this annually is just the approval for the school district to continue to partner with the regional office and the safe schools program. This would be an extension, each year we just come back and ask for that extension on the current contract to extend our partnership with them through July, from July first of twenty twenty through July or June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so this is pretty standard, correct?
Correct.
Okay, any questions or comments on this? Very good. I'll make a motion to approve safe school resolution intergovernmental agreement as presented in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Troy. Again, this is the roll call.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Myarino?
Yeah.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes, okay, that motion carries, thank you. Moving on to nineteen point six, we have policy committee item regarding graduation requirement waiver. Dr. Rowe, I'm going to turn it over to you at first.
Sounds good. All right, so as you recall, last month, the, the board approved a, a resolution that was recommended by IASD, which granted certain powers to, to the administration to bypass district policy in order to carry out executive orders from the governor and directors from, and directives from the Illinois State Board of Education. Following that resolution, the governor waived certain graduation requirements at the state level. What that resolution did not cover, however, is local graduation requirements. The state of Illinois has graduation requirements, around sixteen credit hours in order to graduate. And in Huntley, obvious hours are at twenty-three, so we prominently, we predominantly are, our additional hours are electives. But we still, because of this situation, have a handful of students who are in a position where they were, they were registered and, and currently taking courses this semester, they needed to graduate. And we are asking that the board waive, waive the, the graduation requirements that those students were needing because of this crisis and allow them to move forward and graduate without issue. Dr. Schlitzer or I are happy to take any questions on the matter.
Okay, any questions on this?
Do we have a, a sense for what the, I guess, the distribution of gap is by like number of students? And then how far, how far off they would be?
Do you mean in terms of like how many students are missing what credits, that, that kind of question?
Yeah, like how many, if there's ten and they all have half a credit left, or is it, you know, a hundred and fifty and they're all, you know, seven credits away, I mean.
No, so when you look at that list and it's in your packet, so we have eighteen students that are missing a half a credit of English, and those are primarily students that needed to recover it. And it was just this last semester because of the crisis that, that put them off the rails. In math, fourteen students were missing half a credit. Some of these were the same students, we actually, Mrs. Lekkowitz at the high school was tracking a very detailed spreadsheet with counselors. And the truth is, these numbers actually can still change till tomorrow. So we still have some students that are finishing, these numbers might be a little bit lower. And really, the, the elective credits are the ones where we see students that might be needing to waive the most. We require a lot of elective credits compared to the state, we are lucky that we can offer them. Some other schools in Illinois maybe don't have that opportunity that we do. But what we're finding is that some of our students and many of these students are at risk to begin with or have had challenges in their high school career. They maybe had to recover credits in a core class, so now as seniors, they're making up more elective credits. And so you see that's why there, there's more elective credits on there than others. And I think the bottom line is those half credits in English, math, science and, and US history, I'm just a small handful of students, really aligns with the state guidance of saying those students were in those classes right now during the shutdown, it negatively impacted them, so the state just drew back that one half credit. And then for us, again, the electives just exceeded the state requirements to begin with, which is completely fine. But we did have those students that were negatively impacted this semester.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? All right, thank you, Dr. Schlitzer, thank you, Dr. Rowe. With that, I'm going to make a motion under this item. I move that the board graduates senior students meeting state of Illinois graduation requirements and who were scheduled based on successful, successful completion of their spring semester course load to also meet district graduation requirements by the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, even if the students were not able to do so due to the suspension of in-person instruction as a result of the COVID pandemic.
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi. And that's a mouthful. I'm sorry, I didn't check to see if you're doing this as a, yes, we need to do this as a roll call, so let's do this as a roll call. You're muted, Ms. Doc.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Myarino? Mrs. Myarino?
I think she's frozen.
Can you give me a thumbs up? Okay, Mr. Fleck?
Yes, okay, that motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we got two yeses from Ms. Myarino, but found it as one, so that motion carries, very good. Takes us to item twenty. Is there any public comment, Mr. Armstrong, Dr. Bzinski or Dr. Rowe?
I'm seeing none in the Zoom meeting.
No, sir.
Okay.
Wait, did we do nineteen point six?
We just.
Sorry.
Yes, that's okay. All right, so I'm, I'm out of agenda items except for going back into closed session, so. And there was no public comment, so I am going to make a motion at eight fifty-two to resume closed session.
Second.
Second for Mr. Troy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, why don't we take three, four minutes and we'll reconvene in closed session, okay?
Thanks, everybody.
Okay.
This room looks a lot like the other room did.
A little cooler, so.
Bill, you kind of look like the Blair Witch Project movie.
I cannot give this.
All right.
Dave's association with the interrogation line was perfect.
Scott, is Julie going to join us?
I thought so.
Or are we just closing out?
Closing time.
I think you just close out. I'm texting her. I think you just close out.
Okay. Mr. Armstrong, Dr. Budzinski, is there any public comment?
Oh, cooler, so.
Yeah.
I am seeing none at this time from the Zoom meeting.
Okay. Okay. Well, it is 10 o'clock. We are going to resume in open session. There is no action to take from closed session. So, Mr. Troy as secretary, if you could take attendance.
Okay, ready for attendance. Mr. Flock?
I'm here.
Mr. Quagliano is not. Mr. Troy, I am here. Mr. Garen?
I'm here as well.
Mr. Gentry?
I'm here.
Mrs. Melendi? Mrs. Myrino Schibling?
Here, so long.
Okay.
All right.
We have a quorum. And so, there being no other further action at 10:01, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks everyone. It was a long night.
Okay.
Have a nice weekend.
Okay, so long everyone.
You as well.